I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight led by Liv and Zoe Fuqua.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you stay right there, Councilman Hammond's gonna be right down to talk to you.
Nice job, come on up. You guys excited? Yeah? You look nice. Here, turn this way. Alright, we're gonna start off with you, Zoe. Alright, you are Zoe Fuqua, and you're six years old, and you're in kindergarten, right? And whose class are you in?
Miss Cupp.
Mrs. Cupp's class. And you like school because you like to learn and do cool stuff. What kind of stuff do you do at school?
Um, do math.
And I, it says here that you like to learn about shapes, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then it also says here that you like to play outside with your friends. What do you guys do when you're outside?
Play at the ball.
It sounds like fun. And it says here, when you grow up, you want to be a teacher. Uh, it says you want to be a teacher to help and keep people safe. Do you know what kind of, what grade you want to teach? Want to do kindergarten, first grade, second grade, high school? You don't know yet, huh? We'll give you some time to think on it, alright? So, on behalf of the Westland City Council, and the mayor, and the deputy, and the city clerk, we're gonna give you a certificate for saying the pledge today. Thank you very much for coming out and doing it. Here you go. Stay up here, just move next to your sister. Okay, Liv, it's your turn, now you ready? Alright, it says here that you're eight years old, and you're in Ms. Tillman's class. And one thing you like about schools, you like to write. What type of stuff do you like to write about?
About Christmas things.
What kind of Christmas stuff do you like to write about?
When I make gingerbread houses with my family.
That sounds like fun. Do you get to eat them?
Yes.
Any good?
Yes.
Sounds tasty. Uh, it says here, when you're not in school, you like to play with your sisters and your brothers. And it says here, you have four sisters and one brother, and you're the oldest. What's it like to be the oldest? Are you the boss?
Um, yes.
And then, it says here, when you grow up, you'd like to be a farmer. Now, why do you want to be a farmer?
Because I get to play with animals.
Sounds like a lot of fun, that's gonna be a great job. Well, on behalf of the Westland City Council, the mayor, and the clerk, this is your certificate for coming out and doing the pledge. And we're gonna have your mom come up here, and your principal, Ms. Griffin. Want to say a few things about your daughters?
Um, as you heard, they're the oldest two of six, and they are the best older siblings. They help so much, they're very responsible, they're smart, they're creative. I love them, and I'm so proud to be their mom.
Well, that's something hard to follow. Um, so, at Elliott School, we feel very fortunate, because the Fuqua family just joined us this year, and we are so happy to have the girls. They are true leaders, even at their young age. I mentioned to Mrs. Tillman, um, I just mentioned, um, Liv's name to Mrs. Tillman, and her eyes lit up, and she goes, "Oh, she's so wonderful, she's such a leader." She's a quiet leader, the kids look up to her. And Mrs. Cupp, Zoe's kindergarten teacher, said, "Wow, she is so responsible and so respectful at such a young age." So, we're really happy and really proud of the work that they do. If you ever visit Elliott, and you run into these girls, you're gonna see them smiling and helping, and we are so pleased. This is Eva, little sister, she's excited to join us next year, we're excited to have her. And guess what, mom has the best job of all. She comes and spends what we affectionately call happy hour, every day, from 11:30 to 12:30, monitoring the lunchroom, which is always a lot of fun, and it's a very quiet place to be. So, Fuqua family, thank you, we appreciate all of you.
Thanks, Mrs. Griffin, it sounds like you got an outstanding family and outstanding students. We're gonna, just a quick...
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbell.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Begin with announcements and presentations, mayor.
Well, thank you, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
So, tonight, we had a, we have a certificate of recognition for, for an individual. Barb Markham from the Friendship Center was going to do this recognition tonight, but she's not here, she couldn't make it, so she asked if we would do it, so, um, I'd like to ask Robert Cassidy and his wife Anne, would you please step forward here? It's okay, come on up. Well, there's, Anne, Robert, we're wanting you to...
Please tell.
We want you to bring everybody up. Everybody come on up, including all the Jazzerciseers. Yep, so...
Who do you want to, sir?
Right up here. See, you brought some muscle with you tonight, huh? Yeah, alright. Alright, well, council, I know that you know Robert Cassidy, and the Westland community knows him as well, too, for, for his wonderful voice. He's been the voice of Tiger Games, and our Wild Wings hockey game, and just tons of other things throughout the years. Um, but one of the things we wanted to do is recognize him for his work at the Friendship Center. So, Robert, um, we got a few words here to say. Robert Cassidy has lived here in Nakan Township, uh, has lived here since it was Nakan Township. He worked as an engineer for thirty years for Ford Motor Company. Robert and his beautiful wife Anne have visited Fort Chaplin's Nursing and Rehab Facility at Christmas for forty years, to sing along with residents to help lift their spirits. Robert was professionally trained as a singer at the Royal Canadian College of Music. That must be where you learned that Canadian, uh, National Anthem, that, yeah, alright, okay. He's volunteered to sing the National Anthem at the annual Alumni Red Wing Hockey Game each year, and he's gonna be back out there in a couple weeks, and for other various city events. Robert got involved with Jazzercise a little over two decades ago, and felt such an incredible difference in his health, he became a Jazzercise extra, he became a Jazzercise instructor. So, Robert began his Jazzercise class at the Friendship Center twenty years ago. In 2002, he took his class of fifty people to Comerica Park to perform before the game, and Robert made Westland proud by singing the National Anthem. Robert has been invited back two years, or he was invited back two years later. Many of the students that started with him in their sixties are still doing an hour of cardio in their eighties and still going strong.
Three times a week.
Three times a week. I tried it once with them, and I kinda keep up, so, um, so, Robert, with that said, happy anniversary and congratulations. Robert's been teaching Jazzercise at the Friendship Center for the last twenty years. And Barb Markham was thinking, if we recognized them, we could sign them up for another twenty years, so, alright? So, it's gonna be hard to say no after this. So, Robert, on behalf of the city of Westland, and the city council, our city clerk, and the mayor's office, would like to give you this certificate of recognition, and recognition of your efforts in making Westland a healthier community. Congratulations on your twentieth anniversary of Jazzercise, Jazzercise at the Friendship Center. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna give you this, and we're also gonna let you say a few words as well.
I have to say a few words. I'd be, I'd be if we do a Jazzercise number with, with you. No? Thank you very much, thank you very much, and thank you. Thanks for Barbara, Barbara Markham, and the Friendship Center has been wonderful to us all these years, right, ladies? Yes. Now, men are admitted to Jazzercise, and they're welcome, you guys are welcome. Ladies are gonna show you up, though, anyway, you're welcome. We thank Barbara, and we thank the city for making us welcome, and I thank these ladies for their, uh, for their dedication, dedicated three times a week for an hour. And, uh, and they've been, some of the ladies have been with us since the beginning, that's twenty years, and they're still going. Right, ladies? Yep, yep. Do I have to say any more?
I want to see how nice your wife looks tonight.
During it?
It's always good for business.
My lovely wife Anne.
Oh, there.
My lovely wife Anne, she plays, plays the piano, and, um, when our, my son John is out there, yeah, he's the tough, good-looking fellow standing there. And when John was about ten years old, and little sister, Anne, uh, Anne would take them to, to the Fort Chaplins at Christmas, on Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Eve, the, the day of Christmas Eve, and she's been doing that since, since then. And she'll take friends along, and some of these ladies here have been with us on those nights, too. So, well done, honey. Well done, thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Alright, well, thank you, Robert, thank you, thank you, Anne. We're gonna come over here and get a quick picture, and then we'll be all set, thank you.
Mrs. Everett. Mrs. Everett?
Good evening, I'm Riesta Everett from the city of Westland, and I'm here tonight to welcome the Women History Month. March is the month set aside to honor all women's, and I am here to say, long overdue. Westland history has shown that we have all, you have not always been supportive of women's. But thanks to Kay Beard, Justine Barnes, Eleanor Westack, Dorothy Smith, Betty Talmitch, Lillian Ballard, Rosie Black, and many others who has gone on, but paved, paved the roads for us. And there are many others who still with us. Judge McKnight, Eileen DeHart Schuff, I hope I said it right, Judge Cesarelli, Edna Parker, Joe Johnson, and Courtney, the first black deputy mayor, and all the former council women's. The women's who serve us in education, the superintendent, board members, the teacher, the service workers, the police, city workers, and others on and on. I could go on for hours, but my husband told me to cut it. Thanks to Judy McKinney, and all the women's who come to the MAC, and express not only women's concerns, but city concerns. And I would be out of order if I did not mention the Golden Girls of Southeast Westland Community. The Pearl Charles, the Velma Wilsons, Mary Allen, Elsie Frazier, Rhonda Orr, Delores Flowers, Emma Stevens, Eldora Walsh, Evelyn Davis, and Eleanor Ford. If I miss the Golden Girl, I hope you blame it on my age and not my heart. I stand proud to salute Tasha Green, of a first black woman councilperson. Thanks to the voters all over the city, she is the voted candidate. In closing, to all the women, do not let age, color, or sexual orientation separate us. Remember, there's no stopping now, we on the move. We're looking forward to our fathers, husbands, brothers, sons, and all you males that go with us. Thank you.
We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left? Kevin?
Good evening, council, Kevin Coleman, just a question through the chair on the vouchers. Under General Fund, City Hall and Grounds, Mitigation Services, Belfour Property Restoration, $1,997.25 to our, questions to Steve Smith, our finance director. And then, Project Fund Tifa, blind installation for $3,768. Thank you.
Anyone on my right? Ray?
Anyway, uh, number D, I do support the Westland Police Department. I was looking at this thing here today, approval of a purchase upgraded software program. It's a, I guess it records, man, 6,008, uh, 685, from Adams. I'd like to know, that type of training, does that also cover mental health? Because mental health, autism, and all that kind of stuff, too. I know you guys are pretty well in training, and I just wanted to make sure that's covered, too. Thank you.
Anyone? Yes.
Good evening, under our new business, number eight, is the adoption of the new precinct polling locations going to be combining multiple locations into one, or are we just moving to new locations altogether for these listed individual precincts? Thank you.
One on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda, and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Londo. There was a question on item D, chief?
Through the chair, Ray, that's, that's actually not a purchase of training, it's a training records system. Historically, we've tracked all of our new hire training records in bulky three-ring binders over the years, we've had hundreds of employees, which has made this difficult. As part of our CLIA accreditation, we have to provide all of our training records to the commission. So, this is a software purchase that's gonna allow us to store all of that information digitally, it's gonna be able to allow us a means to provide that training records to CLIA. Um, it's the same software that the city of Levonia Police Department's using.
Thanks, chief. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of regular meeting held February 20, 2018. Requests from Harbor Freight Tools to conduct a temporary sales event in the parking lot of their property at 34600 Warren Road from March 5, 2018, through March 11, 2018, between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Requests from North Brothers Ford to close Marquette and Carlson, south of Ford Road, on May 12, 2018, between 7:30 a.m. and 11:30 a.m., for the North Brothers Ford City of Westland 5K Run Walk, and that the Farmers Market Building be open for use during the event. Approval of purchase of upgraded software program, acronym ADOR, for the police department to assist with field training officer record retention, in the amount of $6,685. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westland and the city of Angster to repair Annapolis Road, and for each city to pay their respective costs, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Last item on the consent calendar, adoption of ordinance 238A2, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending Article 5, Division 4, Sections 2, 301, and 2, 30, uh, rather, through 2, 303, to allow the appointment of two alternate board members to the assessing board of review. Moving to new business, item one, minutes of the study session held February 20, 2018.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Stand.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbell.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two, set public hearing for proposed 2018-2019 budget, a suggested public hearing date of May 7, 2018, has been offered.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item three, confirmation of reappointment of Deborah Folks to the Westland Planning Commission for a two-year term, with the term to expire February 18, 2020.
Motion by, motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any, mayor?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Deborah Folks is in the audience here tonight, um, we're asking you to reappoint her to the Planning Commission, um, for the two-year term. Uh, Ms. Folks has served in the Planning Commission since May of 2015, and she also previously served in the Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, and it's also, should be noted, that she is also a former president of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education.
Thanks. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Folks, would you like to stand and be recognized?
New business, item four, confirmation of appointment of Roger Shiflett to the Westland Building Authority to fill an unexpired term, with the term to expire March 4, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor?
Thank you, council. Uh, this board here, um, the building authority, Roger Shiflett is actually gonna be taking a Rick Gowan spot on the board, and if you remember, Roger Shiflett recently took Rick Gowan's spot with employment with the city of Westland, with, with Rick's retirement. A lot of folks will remember Roger Shiflett, he's a former director of the city of Westland Building Department. Uh, he worked in the, um, is an inspector prior to that, but he, he did a really good job working with the city, um, back when we were first at the front wave of the foreclosure, so, I appreciate Roger's work, and it's nice to have him back, working with the city of Westland. Um, he's currently serves as the deputy director of Westland's Community Development and Housing Department. Uh, he also worked for Community Development, uh, for 2012 to 2017 as a project manager in charge of construction projects before he came back to the city, so, he's certainly qualified. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
He's here.
Roger?
Yeah.
New business, item five, confirmation of appointment of Daniel Stackow as alternate member to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term, with the term to expire March 5, 2021.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Londo. Mayor, do you have it?
Thank you, council president. Um, Mr. Stackow could not be with us here tonight, I don't see him in the audience. Uh, he's been a Westland resident for thirty-eight years. He's the president of the Wayne Westland Veterans Parade Council. Uh, he's a veteran and retired from General Motors after forty-four years of employment, and, uh, he will serve as the alternate to this board if they do not have a quorum.
Thanks. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. And I know Dan was out of town and wished to extend his thanks for, uh, the appointment.
New business, item six, nomination of alternate member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals to fill an unexpired term, with the term to expire October 2, 2018. Mr. Merrill Downing has submitted a letter requesting consideration.
We'll open up the floor for nominations.
I move to nominate Merrill Downing.
I second.
There, there any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations by Councilman Hammond, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven, appointment of alternate member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals to fill an unexpired term, with the term to expire October 2, 2018. Mr. Merrill Downing has been nominated.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Downing, if you'd like to stand and be recognized?
New business, item eight, adoption of prepared resolution approving new precinct polling locations for precincts 3, 4, 8, 20, 27, 36, and 39.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Green. There was a question on item eight, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, the chair, to Mr. McDermott. I, I believe you asked whether this was a consolidation or a movement, and actually, it's both. It's proposed that, due to the closure of the Western Wayne Skill Center at the northeast portion of our community, uh, that we had to find an alter, alternate location for voters, and then, of course, there is a so-called domino effect. If you move one, you gotta move another, et cetera, et cetera. And so, one of the things that occurred throughout the process is that we were able to create an efficiency by elimination of one precinct, uh, within the city. We also, uh, through a conversation between myself and a suggestion by both the mayor and the council president, we also identified that the Westland Library might be able to serve as a suitable location for three of our precincts, allowing us to potentially reserve City Hall for a future use, in the event that other buildings may close on us. So, this proposal, actually, again, it does both. It consolidates, it also proposes to move... also proposes to move. We have received the permission of the Election Commission. We have received permission from the Westland Library Board. And then, the final step in all of this is to request of the city council their approval.
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
New business, item 9. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. There was a question on a couple of items. Mr. Smith?
Through the chair. If it's okay, I can call Mr. Coleman tomorrow morning with the answers. And then also, I'll make sure council's aware of the answers as well at the same time.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Clerk, servicemen, and great hard-working citizens of Westland. My name is Javion Johnson. I'm here on behalf of State Representative Jewel Jones, who brings greetings. He's currently at Garden City's, City Council meeting, excuse me. But I'm here briefly just to say that March is Reading Month, and we would love to come out to the, to the local schools here in Westland to speak to some of the youth and to enlighten their days. So if you would like to contact us, we can be reached by our office number at (517) 373-0849. Again, that's (517) 373-0849. Also, I can be reached by email at javion, that's J-A-V-I-O-N-Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N, at house.mi.gov. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Ray?
Wow, not many people up here tonight. Well, anyway, March is a good starting month. Let's, let's start it off. I wrote myself some notes, the master plan. I went to it, and it was great. I liked how they were sorting out the information from people. I gave them some ideals, too. And hopefully, ADA compliance is really big to me here. And anyway, March is the Disability Awareness Month. That means with people with abilities, we look at people as people. And people are living a life these days, are working, and should be treated with equally, like anybody else. And anyway, I'm going to be in Lansing all day tomorrow on Legislation Day. I'll be talking to legislators about mental health. Mental health is going to affect us all, affect families and everything. It's very important that we all make an awareness of that. Because I saw Channel 7 on Facebook, and I was typing on the Facebook chat, and it was really good. That community really cares, and I really enjoyed it. I'm planning on attending one of them this year, again. It was really good how they were talking about recovery, addictions, means really, that's a real big thing right now. They were talking about mental illness and, and how it can affect us all. Talking about the schools and from the kids, you know, and, and gun controls and the roads. And I thought it was a very good piece. Anyway, it's on my Facebook. I really enjoyed it. And I'm really, I'm kind of passing it around to my friends out there. They really like it. They thank me for doing that. And also, they were talking about a little bit of mental health yesterday on Channel 4. But I'm really going to make an awareness of this. This is very, very important. We should be kind to one another. You just don't know what it'll bring you tomorrow. Thank you.
Anybody on my left? Mr. Warren?
Good evening. As some of you maybe remember, last year, the question of Dorsey Park came up in regards to the Wayne County Parks. Over the past period, the Wayne County Parks did their master plan, okay? I attended those sessions, and there was a strong emphasis on kayaking. At this particular point, the county and the state DNR are opposed to put $1 million worth of work in Dorsey Park at this particular stage. We have two stages to complete, and I want to thank Mike Landau and Brian Hornos for attending those meetings with me. And so that we're going to bring this development to Dorsey Park. And I can say that kayaking, room for handicapped, two entrances off Meriman Road, Benoy, and the state and the counties is willing and ready to put nearly a million dollars worth of work into that park, which would be a tremendous addition to the City of Westland. So thank you, Mike. And so, it'll be here. We're on our way. Thank you.
What on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Yes.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Chief and Chief. It's nice to see you all. I'm up here today, actually, to talk about something that is tragic that happened in our city about three months ago. And that is the death of William Marshall in our, in our police station in our jail cells. And I know there's an investigation ongoing by the state, and we don't have a conclusion yet of what happened. But I would like to make a suggestion that while this investigation is ongoing, I would like to see the officers in charge of the detention of William Marshall put on suspension. I would prefer unpaid, given the fact that they could be dangerous individuals that allowed a man to die within our prison cells. These individuals are here to protect us. That's why we pay taxes for them. And if they are so careless to let a man die who is begging to go to the hospital, that I don't believe this should be on the police force, to be very frank. I also think that if it comes to light, that the video that we are unable to see shows that these officers were neglectful and actually deliberately allowed this man to die in our prison cells, I would ask that you would resign, if you know this to be the case. That is completely unacceptable in every way. You're, you're here to protect us, and you allowed a man to die who was not convicted of a crime. I, I don't care if he had drugs on him or not. Unless due process happens, no crime was committed, and even if it was a drug crime, it doesn't constitute death. Thank you.
Is there, is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things tonight, Council. I'd like to introduce you to two of Westland's newest employees. Our new budget director, Daniel Block, he's with us here tonight. Dan, welcome aboard. Just a little quick background. Dan is a Westland resident, and he's a certified public accountant. He's licensed through the state of Michigan with over nine years experience at Plant Moran. During his time at Plant Moran, Daniel supervised audits, reviews, and consulting procedures for a variety of clients in the municipal manufacturing and distribution and construction industry. So he's a family man. He's a local guy. So I think he's going to do a good job. So welcome aboard. I should have also said he's a graduate of Wayne State University, having earned a bachelor's, a business administration degree with a major in accounting as well. So, thanks. Next council is Charles House. He actually, today is his first day on duty as Westland's new economic development director. Mr. House, welcome aboard. Charles is joining the City of Westland's administration team with over 25 years of experience as a sales management professional. He's held his most recent position as the Senior Director of Leasing for General Growth Properties, Inc. They're based out of Chicago, Illinois, since 2010. General Growth Properties is an S&amp;P 500 company focused exclusively on owning, managing, leasing, and redeveloping high-quality real estate properties throughout the United States. Charles possesses a Bachelor of Arts degree in managerial studies from Rice University in Houston, Texas, and I think he's going to be a fine addition to our economic development team. So once again, welcome aboard. Then the last thing, Council, I just want to remind everybody that, that our annual Hockey Night in Canada, or Hockey Night in Canada. Our annual Hockey Night in Westland is coming up. It's the 16th. We still have some tickets for sale. They sell out every year, so you got to make sure you've get, you've got them. They're $10 for adults, $5 for kids 6 through 12 and under 6, they're free. And I've got some tickets tonight. We've got them in the mayor's office. We've got them at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena. So we're looking to, to fill the house again, and the money that we make from that night will go for additional improvements to the Mike Madonna Ice Arena. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything from the city attorney's office?
You can't pass up the concept that we're looking for a sponsorship from Labatt's Blue to rename a Hockey Night in Canada. If, if they're listening, call. We'll take your sponsorship dollars. But actually, the note I made to say was that on behalf of the city prosecutor, and I'm sure the police chief and the fire chief, as we approach St. Patrick's Day, we would encourage all of our residents to be responsible out there, both in terms of their drinking and their driving, and be safe this upcoming holiday. Thank you.
Thanks. Move to council comments. Councilwoman Green.
President, I'd like to start by thanking the students from Elliott Elementary who came out tonight and did the Pledge of Allegiance with us. Also, would like to just say welcome to Dan and Charles. Welcome to the City of Westland. We're glad to have you. Also, would like to say congratulations to everyone who was appointed to commissions and express interest in continuing to help our great city. Would also, in the spirit of promoting and assisting local business owners, just wanted to let everyone know that our local Dairy Queen is offering BOGO, buy one, get one for blizzards the entire month of March. It is a local business owner. So if you want to stop out and enjoy some ice cream on one of these nice sunny days, please do. And also, lastly, just on my Councilwoman Tasha Green page on Facebook, you'll find a story about one of our local John Glenn students by the name of Devin Chapman. He is a local student, again, at John Glenn, who's received really positive feedback from his teachers. He was involved in assisting with raising money for cancer patients and was unexpectedly stricken with cancer himself. So he is actually in pretty bad condition and in need of very expensive medical treatment. So his family, there was a story on Fox 2 News about Devin, and also, his family and, and some of the students at John Glenn have started a GoFundMe page as well. So if anyone in the community would like to donate to that cause of assisting him, if you're able to, you can find it on my Facebook page, again, Councilwoman Tasha Green, and I send my prayers to the family. Thank you.
Councilman Hammonds.
I'd like to also thank all those that were appointed and reappointed to one of our boards or commissions tonight. Thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you. I also want to welcome Mr. Block, Mr. House to the City of Westland. I, too, look forward to working with you as well. If you ever need anything from myself, please don't be afraid to reach out to me. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Again, the new directors, thanks for taking a moment today to talk with me. It was nice to meet you. Look forward to having you here. It's a lot of work to do, so may God have mercy on your soul, and you have my support. To Deborah Folks, congratulations. To Roger Shiflett, thank you for your service. To Dan Statchow, you're watching me from here, I hope. So thank you for volunteering and stepping up. And to Mr. Downing, welcome. We're glad to have you and look forward to having your talents and skills ever present here as we move forward. I'll also echo what the city attorney said. St. Patrick's Day is coming up, and, well, I would like everybody to please just have a little ounce of prevention, a little ounce of cause. Just, you know, keep it down a little bit, you know, keep it to a dull roar and be safe out there, not just for yourself, but for everybody else on the road, such as my children, too. So please. Other than that, also with the young men that my colleague, Tasha Green, mentioned, I also shared it as well. So thank you, Councilwoman Green, for bringing that up. I know what it's like to have to suffer a family member through that situation. This young man's been very active in his school, and it seems very strange that he's been working so hard to fight cancer himself, and he himself becomes stricken. So it's, it's just a horrible thing. And I ask that you go either lend your thoughts and prayers and any financial support you can lend as well. So I'd be very thankful. With that, I'll conclude.
Thanks. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. I, too, would like to thank Mrs. Folks, Mr. Sheffler, Mr. Statchow, and Mr. Downing. You guys don't, aren't going to get rich off of these jobs, but they are going to work you to death. So I appreciate you guys signing up to help the city out. To Councilwoman Green, if I could, is there a charity involved in this, or is it just a, a GoFundMe page?
There's just a GoFundMe page, but they've raised a pretty good amount of money. They need, they're trying to raise $15,000, and so far, they've raised just over $7. So they got a little ways to go.
If, if I might, Council President, might I ask somebody in the audience who's involved in the Cancer Society a question?
Sure.
Here you are. If money is donated in this young man's name, would the American Cancer Society see to it that they got to him?
Well, it's definitely ironic, because we had a meeting, a conference meeting, a few days ago, and brought him up in the conversation with our lead team. And so, one of the girls that knows of him that's in school is going to reach out to them to see how we can help in any way through the American Cancer Society and also with our group. So we haven't got a lot of the details yet, but we are looking into it, and it's definitely ways have you, you know, on our mind, and we definitely are looking into it. So I could always keep in touch, or whatever you want.
And the reason I ask is I have access to some people who have dollars, but it has to go to a charitable organization. Maybe the J.C.'s is, it's possible to go through there, or the Goodfellows. So I'll see what I can do about getting some dollars for this young man. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Londo.
Thank you. I want to start by congratulating all those that were appointed or reappointed to serve on our city boards and commissions, Mrs. Folks, Mr. Statchow, Mr. Shiflett, and Mr. Downing. Appreciate you guys stepping up to serve on our boards. And as a former board member, I can appreciate the dedication. So thank you again for serving. I want to welcome our new budget director, Mr. Block, and then our new economic development director, Mr. House, to the City of Westland. I look forward to working with you, and good luck to you in the future. And thank you, Mr. Warren, for bringing up the Wayne County Parks discussion. Did attend that meeting. I had it on my list. He summed it up nicely, so I'll just leave it at that. But I do have some copies of the proposed plan. If anybody in the audience would like to see them, just see me after the meeting. And then I would like to also thank Ray for attending the Master Plan Community Summit meeting last week, and, or mentioning it, I should say. Talking to our advisors, OHM advisors, our consultants, the feedback was tremendous from what they said. Our residents really stepped up and contributed to this project. So I can't wait to see the final product. And I want to remind you that our next coffee hour for the city council is this Saturday, March 10, at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, located at 32150 Dorsey Street. We'll be meeting in the Norway Room at 12:00 p.m. And I'd like to see everybody out at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena for the, on March 16, for the Hockey Night in Westland. I've been a part of this event for the last six years, and it's a great event. And remember, all proceeds benefit the Mike Madonna Ice Arena improvements. And lastly, I'll just leave it on issue with the schools. I attended the school safety meeting along with some of my colleagues at the, at Stevenson Middle School, which was aimed at addressing concerns about how schools keep students and staff safe, and to discuss what we can do to ensure our child's safety in the wake of this national safety crisis. Mayor Wild and Police Chief Dedrusik were there, along with the school administration. They were there to answer questions and provide resources about school safety and the growing problem, a growing sentiment regarding threats of school violence both locally and nationally. There are two remaining meetings left. If you'd like to attend, the next one is actually tomorrow. So for the ones in the audience tonight, at John Glenn High School, March 6, at 5:30 p.m. John Glenn's located at 36105 Marquette. And then March 12, which is a Monday, 9:30 a.m., at the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board Office, which is at 36745 Marquette. Additional meetings will be scheduled as necessary. And if you need more information, you can go to the school's website at WWCSD.net. On a personal note, I have family members that attend the schools, and many of my colleagues do as well. So school safety is obviously very, very important to us. And my heart breaks for all. breaks for all those that were affected in the tragedy at Parkland, Florida, and all the ones before that, and, you know, all the inominous and violent threats against our schools on social media, which seem to become far too common, so one tragedy is one too many, and I just want to see an end to it. Thanks.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Uh, briefly, I'd just like to welcome Dan, our new budget director, and Charles, in economic development. Uh, we're, we're glad to see those positions filled again, and I think the whole council's looking forward to what you guys bring to the table and your special focus there. I know we kind of had other directors working to try to complete some of those tasks, so we're really glad to see, uh, the two new hires, uh, in the administration. And then I'd like to, uh, congratulate Merrill Downing, as well as the other appointments and reappointments, uh, to the boards and commissions. Uh, we're still working to get the, uh, updated version on the website, so it's easy to see where the vacancies are, if you're interested in one of the boards and commissions, but if you are interested and you do find that there are vacancies, uh, let's keep those letters of recommendations coming in, either to the council members or preferably to the mayor's office, and that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, start off by thanking, uh, Liv and Zoe, the two students from Elliott Elementary, for leading us in the pledge of allegiance this, this evening. Deborah, Roger, uh, Dan's not here tonight, but Merrill, congratulations on your appointments or reappointments. Uh, as Councilman Johnson said, you're not going to get rich at it, but we, we desperately need people to, uh, to step forward and serve on those boards and commissions, so thank you, uh, for doing so. And to Dan and Charles, our, our two new directors, uh, welcome, I'm sure you're going to do a great job. Dan's already just got a little thing called the Budget Sessions, that's going to start in, uh, less than thirty days, so, uh, he's going to get indoctrinated by fire, and, and I know that, uh, Bruce Thompson is probably greatly relieved that Charles is on board now, so that, uh, frees up one of the multiple hats he's been wearing for, uh, for some time, so, uh, gentlemen, thank you, and we look forward to working with you. And that's all I have this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?